Okay, I hope everyone can hear me. I'll go through, kind of just read our South Pasadena Commission Statement of Civility. As your appointed government board, we will treat each other, members of the public and city employees with patience, civility, and courtesy as a model of the same behavior we wish to reflect in South Pasadena for the conduct of all city business and community participation. The decisions made today will be for the benefit of South Pasadena community and not for personal gain. We're here in the council chambers at fourteen twenty-four Mission Street, South Pasadena, and we're also available online. People can join on Zoom and feel free to join that way. So I guess I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you do a quick roll call, I'm here. This is Omari Ferguson.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Sam Hernandez?
Present.
Vice Chair Charles Trevino and Commissioner David Malling are absent today. We have a quorum. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna do a quick Pledge of Allegiance. Yeah, well. Our public understands some of these. Physical liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All for that, and then we will get into, we've received one public comment. It's actually on, I think it's sort of related to an agenda item that we have. Part of work, I think it'll fall into our work plan review, but we can talk about it at that time. I think Ted was likely seeing that public on, probably speak to that. I didn't see any other comments, just the one.
No, we don't have any public comments this evening. Thank you.
Okay, so then we can, is there anybody present that'd like to make a public comment?
No, nobody present on Zoom either.
Okay. All right, so then I guess we can move on to the next item. Which was a presentation?
All right. Honorable Mayor, Chair, and Commissioners, thank you so much for having me this evening. My name is Mary Hadad. I'm from the City Manager's Office. I think I've had the pleasure of meeting some of you, not all of you. And right now, currently, I'm working on a project that I wanted to come before you all and conduct some in-person outreach on. You might have gotten an email from our team regarding the commission analysis. So just to provide some background on this, oh, sorry, in the next slide, please. So just to provide some background, some of you may have been on the commission or on a, some kind of commission two years ago, where we initially conducted this analysis and the City Manager's Office, at the request of the council, brought an analysis to look at all of our city commissions, our efficiencies, some opportunities for consolidation, and then how we can better our processes here at the city to ensure that our commissioners, during their time of all their volunteer hours and all their contributions to the city, had a seamless and positive experience, also were recognized throughout that process. So in February of twenty-two, we brought that item before the council. It was through a study session. And we brought some research on some of the hours that staff spent on commissioners or on commission-related work, the hours that commissioners spend on their work, and then some opportunities or alternatives for consolidation and work plans and different things. So it took a look at kind of the full scope of commission-related work. We had a really robust discussion in February of twenty-two. We brought that item back to council in April, where further direction was taken. So at that meeting, we actually dissolved a couple of ad hoc committees. We consolidated three commissions, so we went from fourteen commissions to eleven, which we have today. We reduced the meeting frequency of the Public Art Commission, and then we also identified some opportunities for training, training guides, and then bringing back of the Commissioner Congress, which was created to celebrate all of our commissioners. Now, we have brought back that item at the request of City Council two years later. We took the item on May first at the last City Council meeting, and this item was more focused on taking a look at the costs associated with commission-related work and staffing. We had a really robust discussion. I think City Council gave our team some clear direction to come back to the commissioners, get some feedback, get some input on what you would like to see beyond the initial survey that we sent out that was really focused on the hours you spend, but we really wanna come to you with some feedback on what you recommend that the city staff brings to the council on June fifth at the next City Council meeting, or the next, next City Council meeting. Next slide, please. So as a result of the twenty-two analysis, we went from fourteen to eleven commissions. And here you have a pie chart of just how the commissions are broken down by department. So you can see here, Community Development oversees four commissions, Public Works three, including the Public Works Commission, one in Community Services, that was one that was consolidated in twenty-twenty-two. We had a youth commission, an animal commission, and a Parks and Recreation Commission that was consolidated into one Community Services seven-body commission, a Finance Commission, Public Safety, our library, and our Library Board of Trustees and Public Safety. So a couple of weeks ago, before we took that item to the City Council, we sent out a survey to all of our commissioners to solicit feedback on the hours that you spent on commission-related work. So the chart here goes through some of the details of those hours spent, and this chart is also included on the item from May first. Next slide, please. So this is kind of meant to be a very brief presentation where we solicit feedback. There's also multiple opportunities to get involved and give us some of your thoughts. So we have another survey that's out, that's more focused on the consolidation efficiency piece. So feel free to give us your feedback through there. We've already received about fifteen responses, and the survey's been out for a couple of days now, which is great. We also are gonna be hosting two virtual input sessions next week, on Monday and Thursday in the afternoon. So the meeting ID is there. It's also in the email that we sent out to all commissioners. So look forward to having people there at their convenience. And then I'm also available anytime for contact if somebody's more comfortable getting on a phone call or emailing me, more than happy to accommodate that communication as well. But also wanted to go around and to all of the commissions, so I'll be at all of them every month giving this presentation, just to have an extra touch point and get some feedback from you all. So that is everything I'd like to share with you guys, and I'm looking forward to hearing some of your thoughts and feedback.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I didn't, my first time meeting you, I'm sorry, Mary?
Yes.
Oh, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
One of the things that I'd like to explore, and I don't know how to go, if that needs to be put on a future agenda, but I think that when it comes to receiving presentations, if that's something that we could schedule concurrently with the MTEC Committee, I'd like to explore the feasibility of doing that. So especially if this doesn't require us as a voting body to make a decision, we're just receiving a presentation. If that same presentation is something that's gonna be presented to MTEC, I see no reason why our commission couldn't just have our meeting concurrently at the same time as that commission. That way, city staff just says it once, and everybody gets to hear the same thing. So. So if that's something that you could explore the feasibility of, then let me know. That'd be helpful.
Yeah, sure.
Agreed.
Okay, sounds good. So you'll see that item. Yes. Yes, thank you so much. But feel free to contact me if any questions do come up. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also appreciate the effort. Next item we have up is the review and approval of the Public Works Commission Annual Commission Report and the twenty-two forty-five work plan proposal.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor Snimer. My name is Michael Vartanians with the Public Works Department. With tonight being the last Public Works Commission meeting of the fiscal year, we thought it would be a good opportunity to discuss what was on last year's work plan, what we accomplished, and the types of projects and topics that we're gonna be presenting to the Public Works Commission next fiscal year. Next slide, please. These four projects were on the work plan for the twenty-three twenty-four fiscal year. The recreational facilities improvements, which include the two pocket parks, Curvalia and Berkshire. These projects are at ninety-five percent design, and once this last final details are put in place, we'll be able to advertise the project and move on into construction in the next fiscal year. The Snake Trail, which is a pedestrian path of travel on the west side of the city. We're exploring options on how to approach this trail. That's something that will come up again next year as part of suggestions on how we can improve that area of the city. We had the West Side Reservoir last year, or last Public Works Meeting, we brought forward the the analysis of the seismic and structural design of the project of the West Side Reservoir, and we proposed the idea of moving forward with a preliminary design report that will be going to council next month to allow our consultant to move forward with preparing that preliminary design report. And that preliminary design report will also be coming up next year. That will present to you the findings and the roadmap towards construction. Our sewer system repair, rehabilitation, and replacement. Last year, the commission was presented the findings of the consent judgment from two thousand and eleven and our steps towards compliance, as well as our requirements towards improvement, improvements in our maintenance, reporting that we need to do, and any repairs that are needed citywide. And finally, an update on the street improvement plans was provided this fiscal year. That included the pavement management plan that we're in the middle of preparing currently. That will be completed in the coming months, as well as our proposal for a area approach to the city as far as street improvement plans, including a financial model that includes our street improvements, water improvements, and sewer improvements as far as an area approach is concerned. And we completed a couple streets citywide, namely Monterey Road, Forest, Sterling, and Alta Vista. We have a, our next few projects that we discussed two meetings ago, of course, I believe it was in January, where we discussed our slurry seal program that we're preparing. We have the Arroyo-Pasadena intersection, that's gonna be a separate design, and then we're in the middle of designing our next resurfacing project, which will include some streets, namely Edgewood, Pine, Maple, et cetera. Next slide, please. So these are the items that we're proposing to be part of our work plan for the next fiscal year. So as mentioned already, we're planning on completing the pavement management plan and presenting that to you as a review of what the findings were and how we're planning to move forward, a more detailed look at the finances that will be needed as far as an annual program. To present a sidewalk improvement program, this will include our current ADA project, ADA project, and our next year's CDBG ADA project as far as improvements to our in-house strategy that we, our approach that we have to improve sidewalks citywide, and presenting an incentive program for how we incentivize homeowners to do repairs themselves in front of their properties, whether that's some type of a reimbursement or whatnot. We're planning on preparing something like that. And then, as mentioned previously, the West Side Reservoir. We're planning to bring that back to the Public Works Commission to present the findings of the preliminary design report and present the roadmap towards construction, and we'll have a better idea of what exactly that will entail once our consultant starts preparing and we work with them. And finally, the San Pasquale construction updates. This is the joint project with Pasadena, where in early two thousand and twenty-five, once construction starts, we'll be able to share construction updates, photos, accomplishments, and et cetera.
Can you speak a little bit to the details of what that San Pascal construction project is?
Sure, that's the project that involves stormwater capture near the golf course by San Ben Park by San Pasquale. It's a joint effort with the city of Pasadena. They have a site, and we have a site that we're doing a diversion from the Arroyo Seco, capturing water, cleaning it, and then releasing it back into the Arroyo Seco.
If I'm not mistaken, that's the one that's in, at the Arroyo?
The Arroyo Seco.
Partnering up with, with Pasadena?
Yes.
And so that there are funds for that, that we're just tapping into?
I believe the ULR approved those funding. Yeah.
Yeah, I know Michael's the new kid on board. So a few questions, and if you can elaborate once again on San Pasquale and what we're, what the intention is down there, because it's a lot of runoff, and we wanna try and capture that and, and use that for irrigation for the Arroyo Golf Course, baseball field, all, all of the above, I'm sure. Go ahead.
Right. I mean, there's many aspects of the project, including infiltration, capture, reuse onsite, and release back into the channel. Ted, did you wanna add anything?
Yeah, you know, as Michael said, and to address the question, so we envisioned this as one of multiple projects over time, because there's at least six outfalls. And what I mean by that is basically subwatersheds of the city that drain to the Arroyo. So we're really capturing one that crosses the border between Pasadena and South Pasadena. And so there's two sister projects, one in Pasadena along the San Rafael Channel, and one in South Pasadena, which is that, it's that tiny section between Stony Drive and the channel itself. It's right now, it's wooded and it's inaccessible. So the idea is, yes, to capture runoff actually from the Arroyo Channel, the Arroyo Seco Channel, bring it into the city, and it'll, it'll basically it'll somewhat percolate into the ground there, but it'll also sort of pass through the treatment system. And we plan to capture some of that, route it down to the golf course. There's already a, there's already a very old, I wouldn't really call it a pipe, it's more like a underground tunnel that was built many years ago. And so that right now feeds the golf course. So our plan is to put a small treatment system in the maintenance area of the golf course. You wouldn't even see it. It's kind of where the back building, those buildings are in the center. And so that's actually the last component of the project. As Michael said, the project's ninety-five percent complete. That's the last component. And so with that design, we'll be able to utilize, we'll continue to utilize that water from the Arroyo Channel, but the water's currently untreated. This water would treat it for irrigation on the golf course. So there's future plans to do other projects like underneath the soccer and baseball field, the South Arroyo Field, to do perhaps a water feature at the golf course itself, that would be a treatment system, and then maybe something at the driving range and even in the nature park.
And that's all being funded by Prop M?
Actually, it's a great segue into this slide. Thank you, Michael. So, so what we were hoping to do with this slide was kind of show you how the Public Works Commission work plan coincided with our capital improvement program. So really, what we're focusing your efforts this coming year are on is helping us develop projects that are in our CIP. So you could see this pie chart here is our, you know, approximate tentative CIP for the whole next year. You can see we've got every aspect on here, water, buildings, parks, transportation, streets. The transportation area is basically covered by MTEC. The parks, the majority of that is building the pocket parks that you've already reviewed. So what we're really looking at for this commission is those four priorities that Michael went over. Pavement, sidewalks, West Side Reservoir, and the San Pascal Stormwater Project. So out of the pie chart here, you'll be, you know, providing recommendations on the entire streets budget. That streets budget of about a little over three million dollars is made up of about two and a half for pavement and other related improvements, and then strictly five hundred thousand for sidewalk, mostly ADA curb ramp improvements. Of the three million dollars in water that we plan on spending, including pipeline upgrades and things like that, we're dedicating about half a million to the West Side Reservoir preliminary design project. And then to answer your question, Commissioner, the San, the San Pascal Construction Project, it's gonna be about three hundred thousand or so of our one-point-three-million-dollar stormwater funding. And the way that works is it's a twelve-million-dollar project. Almost all of it is funded by either Prop sixty-eight or Measure W. But the Prop sixty-eight agreement that we have requires the city to pitch in four-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-and-five-hundred dollars. So it's a very small contribution compared to the twelve million we're getting in funding. What's that?
If we put in four hundred, how much?
We're gonna get four, twelve million minus four hundred. So, so, so that's, you know, we've, that money, that money's already been committed. It's already budgeted and transferred. Yeah, we've already spent about seventy thousand of it. We expect to spend the remainder when this goes into construction. So yeah. Yeah, we're pulling that out of, the city had set up a stormwater reserve years back to fund what we call these MS four compliance projects. And then we also have our Measure W local money that we get. We get a quarter of a million dollars a year that we're contributing to that project also. Yeah, we're covered. And, you know, water is gonna be funded completely out of our Water Enterprise Fund. And then pavement and sidewalk improvements are a variety of different funds, at least six or seven different funds, including Measure M, Measure R, you know, SB one funds. There's a good chunk of general fund money in there, but because it has to be, we have to commit, at the moment, we have to commit at least one, one-point-four million dollars a year of general fund money to get about six hundred thousand dollars in state money.
Six hundred thousand?
Yes. We're trying to rebalance that with the state. It's not an easy thing to do, but we're trying to spend one-point-four and no more right now, just to maximize that ratio. The council may want us to spend more so we can get more done, but we're really trying to make that ratio very beneficial.
Just refresh my, West Side is which one?
West Side's the one that's just off of Gillette Crescent, like west of Meridian.
Behind the high school?
Yeah, it's the one that's up on the hill. Exactly.
The one that we've talked about tearing it down?
Yep, it's the last one, basically. It's the only one that.
Rebuilding and tearing down?
Yep.
Rebuilding first? Depending on the location. Ah, okay.
Well, what we would do is, we would actually build a.
Yeah, that's good luck.
Yeah. The.
Was that they consider all the project alternatives? So if that means like they get out of service, upside the pumps neighboring the different area, if we can figure out a way to mitigate the B force again with? Okay, like, so that would all be considered as part of the study? Because I thought we had talked about that way back.
So we, we did it a couple of different sessions. Yeah. It's a long process. This is, I've said this a couple of times. It's probably one of the most complicated projects the city will undertake, because as Chair Ferguson mentioned, we basically have to build a temporary structure to keep the site running, remove the existing one, and put a new one in its place. So the preliminary design report that Michael has worked with our consultant to develop and will bring into council, basically give us two options on how to do that exactly. And then with that information, the feasibility study that you mentioned, it's kind of like a constructibility feasibility site planning study. It's a whole bunch of things in one, which is why it's an expensive endeavor. We'll set up the roadmap for how to rebuild that location. Yeah.
I had thought that we thought we had enough everywhere else to shut that one down.
The way the city is, it's kind of like, you know, the downtown area, we call like the central zone, is in the, like the, is like a valley. And then you have higher elevation on the south side, especially in the southwest, and then higher elevation in the north, like the Raymond Hill area. So we actually have to divide the city up into five different zones. A tiny section is supplied by Pasadena. And so we really, this, the West Side Reservoir is basically the storage system for one of those zones. And it's basically the southwest hills. So you really can't get away from having something, and we don't really have another location. Not to mention, all the pipelines are already built to run to that location. So, you know, you can't really move it without reconfiguring the entire system at the cost of, you know, hundreds of millions. So, so it makes, you know, this is kind of, you know, we have to rebuild this. Yeah. Well, that's why we have to put the new one right where the old one is, and that's gonna be one of the toughest design and operation challenges. But, you know, we've got a really one of the best teams you can get. It's a specialty type of system that there's only a handful of experts that really understand, and those, those are the folks that we have working on this.
Thank you.
Of course. Any questions on this slide and how this ties in financially?
Yeah, I guess, well, my only question would be, if this is the draft, if we could align like either the colors of these pie graph sections to where the budget items fall into? So like if we're talking about like pavement, unless these are aligned.
Yeah, these are, so we did divide this up, how our budget system works. So if you look at our capital improvement program, we have eleven CIP sections. We actually number them nine thousand one through nine thousand eleven in the budget. And so each one of these represents a grouping of projects. So, you know, in streets, we have two projects, which is the street improvements and the sidewalk improvements. In transportation, we have, you know, a half dozen projects. But if you look at our capital improvement program, it, you'd see these numbers, as long as they don't change in the next, you know, two months, which they might slightly.
So the two, so if I'm understanding this properly, the two-point-seven-million-and-five-hundred-thousand, those are gonna be coming out of the streets, three-point-two million.
And that is, that is that total budget. We, you know, it's approximate.
Design is coming out of the water budget, and the San Pascal Construction Stormwater is coming out of, okay, the stormwater budget.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you. I, I do have a question that was back on slide number, page two. The, we, we mentioned that the pocket parks are about ninety-five percent design. We talked about the pocket parks and Snake Trail, Snake Trail, being kind of at a preliminary stage and looking for input. I'm wondering if there's gonna be any community outreach or like a survey or what type of community efforts you're gonna be going out to solicit that feedback?
Sure. Not quite at this stage. Really, what we're faced with is, if everyone's familiar with the Snake Trail, it's quite an incline. There's a lot of, you know, accessibility and issues where there are to it. So really, the first step is just looking at an assessment of it. We really kind of wanna know what the investment might be before we even get into the conceptual idea stage of like community input. It's really a question of like, what's the cost benefit of investing into this location? It's a city-owned property, so there's of course liabilities associated with it. It's really just kind of looking at it, you know, based on the community concern that already exists for the park. So if we find that there's improvements that can be made that are reasonable and that we can fund, then we'd wanna start to incorporate, like, okay, how do we go about this? What's this gonna look like? What does the community want out of this process? So, so really, we probably won't get too far into that just yet. It's, it's kind of like, you know, our first look at the place.
Okay, so I'm, I'm guess I'm wondering, like, the, the, if there are community concerns around that, that Snake Trail, are the community concerns that, in its current state, are they being documented and aggregated? So that way, as we go into any of this?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, that's what the, that's what facilitated actually showing up on the plan. We really probably wouldn't have touched it if it wasn't for that community input
Right.
that we, that we've received, and we know as of our most recent council meeting that the council wants us to prioritize it. They don't want it to be pushed off to another year.
Right. And then on the next slide, you talked about page, that was, I guess, page three? And then on the next slide, you talked about page, that was I guess page three, the pavement management plan review. You said that was coming. Did you have any scheduling relate to that? So we have some ideas when we would anticipate that?
Yeah, I think we talked about, maybe talking about it in our next meeting in July with the commission.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we will be talking about it with M-Tech on, in May. And I understand your comment about, you know, potential joint commission meetings. I don't think that that's happened before, so we're definitely gonna take that comment and maybe consider it with council. But in the meantime, we still are trying to move forward with it, so we expect to probably do this here in July.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then on the sidewalk improvement program, we did receive that public comment regarding the curb painting. Can you speak at all towards how that is gonna be integrated or at least insofar as a compliance with the California law?
Yes, so, you know, we typically have kind of two pathways when it comes to street improvements. We have our maintenance efforts, which is basically just fixing what we already have. And then we have our improvements, which is, you know, restructuring something, making it new. And then under those efforts, we have to follow current codes. So with both, with our, mainly with our street reconstruction program, as we rebuild streets, that's, at that point is when we're looking at, are the curb ramps compliant? Is there a proper amount of red curb? Are the crosswalks the right size and definition? So that will be incorporated into the improvements. We can't necessarily do it through the maintenance effort, because really, we're just trying to repaint things and keep them as they are, but just keeping up with them. Because once we start to touch stuff and improve them, we actually have a list of requirements we have to go through. And the costs can sort of, exactly. So that's why it's important to consider those in the improvement projects when we're, we're updating and adding assets versus just keeping the assets the way they are and making sure they last. Yeah, so, so it's already included. You know, Michael's team will evaluate these designs and make sure that we're, we're not missing those types of necessary improvements.
Okay, just, just so I'm really clear on that. If the maintenance crew is going out to let's say repaint a curb, if they get to, they can repaint what's there with where the current boundary is. But if they were then to attempt to, let's say, paint additional footage because of, to comply with this law, they would essentially be running afoul because they may trigger additional requirements?
It depends on the circumstance. Like, we can paint new red curb in some locations. And we do. We, we try to limit it to only what's necessary because obviously every red curb we paint is one less parking spot for a resident. So we can do it in certain circumstances, and we do. For example, it's a regular maintenance effort for us to replace a stop sign. Or, or even add a stop sign when it's missing, not when it's a new stop sign. That's a whole other process. And so in those circumstances, we will paint red curb. So it just kind of depends on the circumstance, but if a red curb is warranted, I'll just say, and we can do it without causing additional complications, we'll do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that brings up a good point, because I know that the, on Indiana, they had the fire department came by and found that we had cars parked legally. And then the following day, the fire department realized that they couldn't get their hook and ladder through there. So they took and painted out the entire curb because of that. Not because of anything else, not because of maintenance, but because the fire truck couldn't easily get through.
Okay.
So.
And that's something that Michael's team handles too, like, when we get those requests or in, we'll do a couple of different evaluations, you know, dimensions, site analysis, you know, a couple of different things to see what we do. With erring on the side of safety. But then also consideration of, you know, we're trying, we're not trying to paint the whole town red, to so to say, so, yeah.
I think that would put our, our budget in the red also.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
But it, it does seem though, if, if the, if the primary resistance to it is just a lost parking space, that seems like the, the balance here, we should be really pushing towards the public safety side.
Absolutely, yeah. No, it's not, it's not a question in that case. Really what it comes down to is, you know, I could say, I'll just throw out a number that like, I'd say the majority of residents you ask would love to have red curb a lot, you know, everywhere except for where they park, you know what I mean? So, so yeah, that's what we're, it's not so much that we're concerned about public safety, that's our utmost priority. Where it's might not, it's like a more of a preference, that's what we're trying to err on the side of, like, not reducing parking. Yeah.
I guess what, what I think would be very beneficial or helpful would be just to kind of have some idea of like the scope of something like this. So like, for example, like, there's twenty thousand curbs that should be painted red. And of those twenty thousand, this many get, you know, painted on some maintenance interval or, you know, like.
You know, in the majority of.
It's hard for me. I know we're three square miles, but I mean, how, how do I mentally wrap my head around how much red curb? Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it's an interesting question. We have had assessments in the past, but, you know, honestly, as far as red curb goes, I will say it, it falls below the priority of say like street markings. So we're more concerned about preserving street striping than we are about the red curb. The red curb can fade and that such. And then adding red curb, for the most part, is on almost a case-by-case basis or where a project's being conducted. In the majority of the city, it's simple, because it's where stop signs are, crosswalks, fire hydrants. In like say the southwest hills, it's a lot more complicated because of the dynamics of the streets and the narrowness and that type of thing. So, you know, we haven't taken it on as a comprehensive red curb plan. Maybe one day we can. At the moment, we're trying to do the basics, which is a comprehensive, you know, asphalt plan. So I, we hope that to get there eventually, but we don't have that kind of data to do that analysis just yet.
That's good, that's good.
Yeah.
Well, perhaps then just on the ones that are more clear cut, is it possible to maybe get a, like an analysis of just the ones that are the ones that are just crosswalk, just stop sign? So if it's something that's a, you know, the scale of it isn't, isn't so daunting, this feels like a project that could be publicly advertised and.
It's a lot bigger than you think, because if you're talking about seventy miles of streets, and then you're talking about how many intersections that is, which I don't even know off the top of my head, it's quite an effort. I mean, you're talking about hundreds of thousands and just the analysis. So I will say that we're currently, we're currently undergoing pursuit of what we call a safe streets for all plan. To develop a plan like that costs a couple hundred thousand dollars. There's grants for it. You have to, you have to apply for a grant to develop the two hundred thousand dollar plan so that you can apply for grants to implement the two hundred thousand dollar plan, which would cost millions of dollars. So we are working on that right now. So we plan by next week actually to apply for a grant to develop the type of plan you're talking about. Cause we're, you know, we just don't have, number one, the in-house staff, and number two, the funding to do it. So that, so we do see that in our future to have this analysis you're talking about. But it is quite, it is quite an undertaking. It will cost several thousand dollars. We're hoping to get that at least, I think eighty percent or eight, seventy-five percent funded by the federal government, Department of Transportation.
That's fair. Yeah, thank you.
Of course.
Okay, so I don't wanna throw it out there, but I'm going to. Where does the slow streets play with us?
Sure. So up until now, the slow streets program has not been a capital improvement project. It's been an operational project where, you know, we've put our, not the CIP money, but our actual Public Works operational day-to-day money to work to develop the improvement, the temporary improvements you saw on Oak, Grand, and Hermosa, as well as the work that we've done on Mission Street. We recently brought an item to City Council, I think it was in March, to talk about the future of that plan. Council gave us general direction that they would like to see this form from a temporary effort to a permanent effort, particularly on Mission Street. So we're gonna continue our efforts to redesign Mission Street as a temporary endeavor with a understanding that that will eventually become permanent. So we have to find that funding. We have a couple of sources that are really probably a good opportunity to snatch for that. So you will hopefully one day see a Mission Street improvement, road diet, and, you know, other types of pedestrian and psych, and perhaps cycling improvements on our CIP plan. We're just not there yet, cause we haven't identified the funding. No, our strategy generally is that it's hard to find funding for residential streets, just to pave people's streets. That's everybody in the country and, you know, in the region has that problem. There's state money for it, but like I said, you gotta offer up quite a bit to get it. There's lots of funding out there for arterials, streets like Mission, Prema, Huntington, Fair Oaks. And so we try not to spend our, you know, hard-earned street improvement money on those corridors because we can get money, you know, particularly like cycling money and things like that. So that's our target, is like streets like Mission and, and those grouping. We wanna try to find funding and then have our, our, you know, day-to-day, you know, core asphalt improvement money go to the residential sections of the city. Yeah, of course.
I guess one, one thing was that you, you mentioned in the presentation, a customer, like a resident improvement, potential resident improvement program. It makes changes getting some reimbursement.
To the sidewalk?
Yeah, for sidewalk. Maybe that feasibility of the red curb going to that as well. Because then if a group of residents want to, let's say, paint a curb red or something like that, reach some percentage agreement for the street or, or whatever's feasible, and then they can, that can be something that's put within their scope. And they can paint it and get reimbursement if it's outside of.
So.
But maybe that's something to consider. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, you know, we, we do have, that's of course, you know, if, you know, part of the engineering division that Michael oversees, anybody who's doing any sort of improvements in the public right-of-way as part of their private project will go through the engineering division. So let's say you want to change your driveway or move your driveway or whatever. You, you would, you know, depending on the circumstances, this isn't always the case, but in some circumstances, especially if you're like creating a new one, you would go through the department with the plan check process. So there's always an opportunity to propose a red curb configuration if you're making other public right-of-way improvements. We have a separate program, we call the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, where residents can basically get together and propose some sort of street improvement. And there's a threshold and there's like an application process. We haven't rolled that out yet. We have it basically kind of designed because we don't have the process capacity to do it. We are trying to piggyback off of our, our current permit software implementation process to make that a part of it. So for example, like if you're, wanna remodel your home, you submit a permit application and then you go through our, we have a permit software for that. So we're hoping to sort of piggyback off that same implementation to allow this. Otherwise, we just don't have the staff capacity to manage an effort like that. We need, you know, it requires signatures and names and, and you, you need a, you need an automated system to handle it. So we do have something like that, that we're hoping to debut this coming year. And so that would kind of be that aspect of it. Not necessarily red curbs, but say, you know, the community wanted something like one of these slow street plastic delineator type of improvements or something like that. Yeah.
Okay, great. And then I guess my last, just my last question is like, when it, you'd mentioned that the funding is different for, basically, basically for arterial streets versus not, and like residential streets. And I'm wondering, and this might just sound kind of weird, but can the designation just be shifted and changed? So could a street that's currently like a residential street be designated as an arterial street for like a certain number of years? Therefore, we can get additional funding to pave it and then redesignate it in the future?
You know, unfortunately, it doesn't, it doesn't work that way. We have to like, it depends on the size of the street, the volume that it takes on. It's almost like the street tells you what it is and we don't get to tell it. You know, but we do have a, we will have an effort underway later this year that we have to do about every ten years or so, which is like a speed survey. And this is where we look at all the streets and see if the speed limits that are on them are appropriate. And so that's sort of a, a fresh look at how a street is designated. But we fairly, we pretty much know which streets are, you know, residential, collectors, minor arterials and major arterials. In fact, it's actually published in our general plan that we just adopted, so that it's unlikely to change. But, you know, it's, I like the out-of-the-box thinking. I'm trying to, you know, try to acquire more funding, so. Yes, exactly.
Bring it out.
Yeah.
The, the traffic study gives us a chance to take a look at the streets and maybe a street can be added to the classifications that can get that sort of funding, but as Ted mentioned, as of right now, we're fairly confident.
Yeah, they, they likely want to change, but like Michael said, yeah, it's, it's a possibility, so.
Will you be presenting the, the criteria for like the speed limit changes and things when that comes up?
To the M-Tech Commission, yes. Which, you know, it sort of ties into the, the earlier presentation tonight. A lot of what we're talking about is somewhat shared responsibility. You know, largely, like I showed that pie, the purple projects go there. I know the blue projects kind of live in both places. Certainly, they don't touch anything else on that chart, water, sewer, parks. But when it comes to street improvements, it's kind of a shared, you know, advisement. So. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I guess our next item is the approval of the minutes for the March, oh, I just didn't, didn't pull a vote for this?
Yes, we would need to make a motion so that we can recommend it to approve.
Okay, yeah, do I do, and I, I don't, yeah, okay, so I, I'd like to make a motion that would be reviewed and approved by the Public Works Commission and the twenty, I mean, three twenty-four, I think, Commission Board and the twenty twenty-four and twenty-five.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Oh, thank you, Commissioner Hernandez.
Second?
I second, yeah.
Yeah, so I'd have to just do a quick roll call. So Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Chair Ferguson?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously with no abstained. Okay, we can move on to the next item. Thank you.
Sorry, I was gonna jump in the gun.
No worries.
Approval of the minutes of the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four Public Works Mission Regular Meeting. I'm making a motion that we approve those minutes.
Yeah, I have to abstain, cause I was not here.
I will second.
Thank you. And just with the quick roll call, Chair Ferguson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, aye.
And Commissioner Hernandez, you'd like to abstain?
Yes, please.
Okay, it's noted in the, it's noted in the motion. Thank you. Motion passes two to zero to one. Thank you.
Right, and then so I guess our next item is number five. Do we have any city council communication?
Yes, number one is I would like to give a shout out for the Public Works staff for identifying and solving the problem on the sewage spill on April twenty-five, which required the staff to work with our contractor, Jeremy Com, and actually staying there until the next day, so like twenty-four hours. And, and thank you staff for really dedicating and, and your time. And it was quite impressive to, to learn how the sewers in the storm drain works. It, it's very complex and I learned a lot. And thank you again, Public Works, for an excellent job. And my second comment is about the, the, you know, the, the, the commission consolidation of commission. And I think that there's an overlap between M-Tech and Public Works in terms of sewage. In terms of um sewers um. I'd say that the the uh road diet um and. Public Works um, you know, just the water and and um. So I I noticed that in the last six months, um staff has presented more or less the same. Um project out um plans for each and so to save um. Time uh for staff and staff could could be doing other other things that are more productive. And um it really saves a lot of um staff time and it, in terms of dollars. It's, it comes out to approximately five hundred thousand a year to save um to save. By by consolidating these commissions. And I also would like to propose NREC to um. Consolidate with M-Tech and Public Works in a way because most of their, um the hearings are. Um concentrated on tree removals and um uh tree planting. We have a lot of um development, especially in uh the district one. And so um Public Works is in charge of parks, trees and canopy. So I thought that 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 three and we'll have like the same representation. Um model as the community services that they have seven commissioners, two, two and um. For each and then like one, we have to have an odd member so that uh in case of a tie, there's a tiebreaker. So um that would be um my uh, you know, suggestion or recommendation. Um and it really depends on um the input from the commission. But I've talked to just a few filler between the three commissions and and they're um okay with it. Um but you know, ultimately, it's the commission and um it will be the cost versus the um, you know, cost benefit analysis. And uh where staff's time and the money could be spent better, you know. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, uh Mayor. Um uh any Commissioner communication?
No, I I think we're okay. I just want to mention the uh the fact that we had a fundraiser for the. South Pasadena Tournament of Roses, and we had our wonderful mayor and council member Janet Braun showed up for the fundraiser. It was an unusual location, it was a home in Glendale, a very unusual home. Uh I think it was about a little over a hundred years old, the home, um probably sitting on forty or fifty thousand. Square foot and he's got four or five, just unusual and and I think uh. A mayor would would attend to the fact that it's such an unusual home. He he has, uh besides being on a hillside, he had, I think. Four or five of our uh float remaining, like the giraffe and the. Uh the few of the other items that we had on our last four or five years float, he's taken these things. Now, you got to picture this giraffe is about the size of this room and he's got it on this hillside and it it's even larger. Uh had a great turnout, it was uh as to whether or not we made any money, I don't know, but uh but we had a wonderful time. So I thank, I thank you for joining us there too.
Yeah, it sounded like you had a great life experience.
Yeah, it was good. We found it, and we'll do it again next year. Um a few of us that have uh uh season tickets to the Dodgers. Uh entered the tickets into a piñata because it was Mexican, it was a cuatro uh fiesta. And so we had a lot of Hispanic stuff around and piñatas. And you would purchase a piñata and then break it open and besides the candy, there'd be a gift in there. Uh we had two of them that had uh season or uh tickets to a to a Dodger game, so. It was, it was, it was a great, a lot of fun, well worth it too, so thank you.
Commissioner Jones, do you have any um communications?
Was Public Works involved with Golden Streets?
Oh.
Right.
Uh yes, absolutely, um so we had a.
You did great, it was awesome.
Yes. Uh you know, it was mostly active SUV, we did a lot of uh the planning aspect of it. Um again, our our engineering team helped with the traffic control plan and our facilities team helped with some of the setup. Um but yeah, a couple of us were there that day and it went pretty smoothly, so we're pretty happy with it.
Yeah, loved it. More of those, please, those are wonderful.
Except for flowers, good job, good job.
Oh, I didn't hear that part, yeah.
Yeah, I forgot to mention about the eclectic too, that we did have a a hell of a time. Unfortunately, I wasn't here. I I was actually in Palm Springs working, but um we had close to twelve thousand that showed up this year. So even though we only closed down Meridian this year, um we're looking for, we're looking forward once again. Hopefully uh in the coming years. I think this was our tenth year, tenth or twelfth year. Fourteen, wow. I, there was one year that we had eighteen thousand that showed up about four years ago. Covid, so we're looking forward to it. It was a lot of fun, glad I wasn't here, okay.
Um I guess the, I guess a couple of, I had a couple of things. One that I kind of spoke about previously and I think it very much overlaps with. Uh the mayor's uh suggestions as far as consolidation. Um what I was thinking was that if um when we have an agenda, we, in looking over our last year's accomplishments. A lot of what we did in our meetings was the receiving of a presentation. And so um what I would, what I would suggest is that if we just schedule this meeting at the same time. As the M-Tech receiving of the same presentation, then we would necessarily, we wouldn't even necessarily need to restructure a commission per se. We could just be doing, taking care of the work of both commissions at the same time. Um so I just kind of tossed that out as kind of a a possible suggestion. Because then if we do end up, one of the things that uh from what I, my understanding of the background in this is that. There was so much content that it made it difficult to even have the meeting within a small block of time because there was so much stuff they needed to do, let's say. So then we would still, we'd still maintain the operational flexibility to pull out and do something if it was warranted. Or we can just keep it consolidated to if it's just a presentation. So um once that's, I'm sure you um. When folks are discussing that, they can weigh the merits, pros, cons, come up with a viable uh option. But I'm receptive to anything that work, helps things work smoothly. Um the other point that I want to talk about is. I wa- I I need, I would like to see something on the agenda for discussion about how agendas for our meeting get set. Um one of the things that uh previous, in one of our previous meetings, we had a lot of. Of residents that were here and they were talking specifically to pain points they were having on their street. Um I think that it would be beneficial if we could find time to respond to those things. Be be it like scheduling an agenda, item to talk about a future meeting. Um or at least just have some dialogue around how our agendas are getting set because um. Uh you know, it's, be this being a Brown Acted Board, those things need to be communicated with a certain amount of structure. And I understand that, you know, I can't um single-handedly just throw things here. But I think there needs to be an opportunity for those conversations to take place. So um. So yeah, if on the next agenda, we can have something regarding agenda setting. Um do I need to make a motion to push for that or is it something that can just be done administratively?
Well, I could speak to that a little bit, um just as, you know, since we're um on the topic. And then, you know, the commissioner, the commission sort of configuration is on tonight's agenda. Um so our our direction is uh, you know, whatever's in the work plan is what gets set on the agenda. And the work plan is supposed to be derived um explicitly from the cities, the council strategic plan. Um and so since part of the strategic plan is to implement the capital improvement program. Um and then there's a couple of items on the strategic plan, there's water and sewer improvements, there's mobility and transportation improvements. Um there's climate action issues. Uh we basically uh take those items and divvy them up. With regard to how each commission is chartered, our best estimate, which is why streets kind of falls around to. Stormwater can sometimes fall into environmental and or Public Works Commission. Um so that's really how it gets set. Um we don't have too much liberty in agendizing items. Um that, you know, particularly come from the public. Um or that the commissions themselves want to agendize unless they sort of fall into that strategic plan. Um work plan area, but you know, that that's sort of the direction we're operating under. Um I can certainly pass the comments along to be part of the commission analysis that council is currently undergoing.
Yeah, I'm I'm specifically asking for that.
Sure, okay.
I would like to have direct feedback and direct input as far as how the agenda is going to be set, especially if I'm going to be up.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So um you know, with regard to, you know, so one of the things that we're trying to accomplish tonight with the. Um work plan is um. How, you know, and I don't know, we didn't, I don't think we necessarily asked for an action on it, we just wanted to show it to you, we can adopt it in July. Um but a comment on that would be like, what are, what are other things that we want to see on the work plan and then we would evaluate that. And you know, that could be a conversation that we have with council. Of course. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think that our next item was actually staff liaison communications, right?
Yeah, so I have one item, so that's why I stayed up here. Um so uh it is the end of the year as uh Michael had mentioned. And so um next month is our Commissioner Congress, where we invite all the commissions to um celebrate the work accomplished this year. And then share our plans for next year. So um very similar format to last year. Where um there'll be a very brief two to three minute presentation um by each commission. Two slides, one uh showing the annual accomplishments and one showing the. Work plan items that are proposed, not necessarily adopted. And so um. You know, what we plan on doing is showing those exact two slides, probably a different color, but two slides that you saw tonight for the annual plan and the. Um work plan. What we would like to um gather from you is, uh you know. Uh any one of the commissioners can do the presentation, typically it's the chair or the vice chair or or other. Um so what we're hoping to determine is, you know, if there's gonna be, um who can be present to do that presentation. Um and then any new commissioners, um we also want to order you a polo shirt so that we can all look alike on that day, so. And Raina will take care of that. Yeah, there you go, yeah. Um so I I think Rain, is there anything else we have to cover for the Commissioner Congress? It's on June twentieth. Yeah, and it'll be held at the War Memorial at six P M, yes. So if you can, we don't have to do it in the meeting, but if you can let us know um your attendance, shirt size if we need it. And then uh you know, Japan who's intending will want uh a representative to do the presentation.
Yeah, uh thanks a lot, Ted, and uh I think if I didn't say it before, allow me to say it now, I really appreciate the work and effort that you guys do. You're very committed to work getting done and uh willing to do the heavy lifting, so.
Thank you.
Um I think with that, um if anyone doesn't have anything else, I can drop the gavel. Are we all set? All right.
Thank you, meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-six P M.